Occasion food fan at that place, the Green Door over there. Jamie and I just said he ordered some gumbo. Where did you see that on the menu? Gumbo is really good. Yeah, it was really good.
I'm being told that your microphone is off.
Don't want to hear us talking about gumbo. I guess one of you that told me about that place.
Yeah, I mentioned it to you, but I haven't eaten there. I just heard about it.
Okay. Broadman YouTube. What's that? Right here? That'd be tougher businesses in Dade City because they don't really have the tourists coming here. That could support them, yet the local economy doesn't have the industrial complexes to provide high income for the area. So anyway, life goes on. We're going to be till 1:45. I'm just kidding, obviously.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Hybrid Virtual Planning Commission Meeting of October 8, 2020. I'd like to remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices for those who are attending virtually. Mute your microphones while not speaking. At this time, I'd like to stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you like to call the roll, please?
Jamie Girardi. Michael Cox.
Here.
Roberto Sais.
Here.
Christopher Poole. Richard Tonello, representing Chris Williams.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here.
Okay. For those who are here and have not been here before, Planning Commission serves as the local planning agency, and the Planning Commission holds public hearings and transmits to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, Land Development Code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Do we have minutes to approve? I don't think so, right? Okay. Do we have anybody here for public comment, Denise? On something that is not on the agenda today?
No one for public comment and no emails or anything has come in, and no one at the kiosk for public comments.
Okay, thank you. For those who will be in attendance virtually, participants attending through the public comment kiosk and WebEx participants, including the applicants, who have pre-registered for the Hybrid Virtual Planning Commission Meeting will be notified by the county staff when they will be permitted to speak. Applicants will be limited to five minutes. Other participants will be limited to three minutes unless additional time has been requested, and I don't believe I have had any requests for additional time. Participants attending through the public comment kiosk and WebEx must announce the following items before speaking, and at that time, they'll be sworn in by the clerk. Their name, their address, their agenda item, number, or the agenda title. Then they'll have their three or five minutes to start. After public comment, kiosk, and WebEx participants, we will read into the record any public comments, and I don't think we have any of those, right?
No public comments to be read into the record.
So do we want to state about the advertising?
The items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on August 26, 2020, September 9, 2020, September 23, 2020, or by affidavit of certified mailouts and site postings.
Okay. Any comment from the Board on that? So today, we have nine public hearing items on the consent agenda, and these items will be approved by roll call vote. And I think one of those has been changed to a continuance. Is that right? Yeah.
That's correct.
Unless that item is pulled from consent, once the motion is made on the consent agenda, the Planning Commission member who makes the motion will state their name, and the member who seconds the motion will also state their name, and the clerk will call the roll for the vote. Items one through nine are on consent agenda. Madam Clerk, we already read proof of publication. Okay. I think we're ready to go.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. If you would please indulge me, I will go over item PC 7. This item, we sent a notice to you individually that it's a continuance item. So that's PDD 21 CU 04 in the name of Tampa Bay Portfolio Holdings, Delish Gourmet Cafe for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine on premises consumption in conjunction with the operation of a cafe with outside seating and service of alcoholic beverages in a patio in a master plan unit development district. The applicant was not able to perform the required notice, so the continuance is to October 22, Planning Commission Meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Okay. So that's the only item we have for continuance?
That's the only item for continuance.
So do we have a motion to approve the continuance?
I make a motion to approve the continuance for item PC 7. Chris Poole.
Peter Hansel.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion of the motion. All in favor? Aye. By roll call?
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel. Roberto Sais.
Aye.
Christopher Poole. Richard Tonello. Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
I also want to say that for the record, the applicant was physically, I mean, was virtually present, and that there is no one to object to the continuance. We have no one at the kiosk or no one on WebEx.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. So the following item is PC 1, PDD 21 2086. It's a variance for John H. and Mary G. Danker for a reduction in the required minimum north front setback from 15 feet to 7.5 feet for a single-family detached dwelling, and a reduction in the required minimum north front setback from 15 feet to 6 feet for an existing detached garage on a small out-of-record in an R1MH single-family mobile home district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Okay, so do we have any questions? The applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Okay, is there any objection?
No one in objection.
Okay, does the applicant, would he like to speak, or?
The applicant would like to speak if you have any questions for the applicant.
Okay, we have no questions, then let's move on to the next item.
Following item is PC 2. This is PDD 20 7497 in the name of Martin F. and Donna L. Albach. It's for a change in zoning from AR Agricultural Residential District to RMH Mobile Home District. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval, and also want to tell the Planning Commission that the applicant has voluntarily agreed to record a deed restriction that limits the uses to 100 single-family detached dwellings prohibiting mobile and manufactured homes, and that prior to the first preliminary development plan or within 180 days of the approval of the rezoning, the developer will enter a development agreement with Pasco County to provide drainage and retention areas for Morris Bridge Road. Again, this comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, and the applicant's present or virtually?
The applicant is virtually present.
All right, is anyone here to object?
No one here to object.
Okay, do you have a question, Jamie?
I just have one quick question. I see in the agenda memo, it says 100, but in the deed restrictions, I think it says 120, doesn't it?
Okay, we will have to clarify that. If you would, please let the applicant clarify, please.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can we swear in anybody before?
Okay, great.
All right, if anybody's going to speak on any of the items today, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Terrapani's on for this item.
I couldn't understand what.
Ms. Terrapani is on for the item.
Oh, okay, all right, I don't see her, but, okay.
We'll just need her to clarify the number of units.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members.
Oh, there you are, okay.
Can you hear me now?
I hear you and see you.
Thank you so much. My name is Cindy Terrapani. I am the authorized agent for this application. We recently cut 120 units in the deed restriction because that's the magic number that requires an MPD. Based on the site planning that we have done, the maximum number of units we will have are able to pick is 95. So we can revise that before it goes to the Board for the 95.
Okay.
Questions you might have.
Any other questions we have?
Thank you, Cindy.
I did have a comment instead of a question.
All right.
I had a comment.
Sure.
Just so Cynthia, just for the record, this would be subject to school concurrency and also school impact fees. We didn't get a chance to review it, but I just wanted to put that in for the record, just like normal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tonello. We're well aware, and we'll certainly go through that process when we go to the next step in the development.
Okay. All right, Cindy, thank you very much. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to the next one.
Following item is PC 3, PDD 21 7499 in the name of Buddy and Tricia Streeter for a change in zoning from R1 Rule density residential district to R1MH single-family mobile home district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right, and is the applicant present?
Applicant is virtually present.
Okay, anyone here to object?
No one here to object.
Any questions from the dais? No questions? So I think we can move to the next one, PC 4.
PC 4 is PDD 21 7500 in the name of Pasco County Facilities Management Solid Waste Administration Building for a change in zoning from an MPUD master plan unit development district and AR Agricultural Residential District to I1 Light Industrial Park District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay. Anyone to speak for the applicant?
The applicant is actually present at the kiosk, so if you have any questions, Mr. Treschler can answer those.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, I don't hear any questions. Let's move on to the next one.
And for the record, no one is in objection to the item.
Okay.
I'm going to read PC 5, but I believe there's someone in objection, but I will allow the person to state whether he wants to remove it from consent. PC 5 is PDD 21 CU 01 for the District School Board of Pasco County Vertex Development LLC Verizon Wireless for 140-foot above-ground level close-mount monopole wireless communication facility in an MPUD master plan unit development district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet. I believe there's a gentleman by the name of Kevin Lech that may be on. Mr. Lech, are you on?
See the applicant?
Mr. Lech, I believe, is an objector, I believe, but we want to double-check.
That is correct.
Okay, so why don't we just pull this?
We'll pull it from consent, okay, thank you. Okay, we'll pull PC 5. The following item is PC 6, PDD 21 CU 03 in the name of Duke Energy Florida, Inc., US Air Force for two 103-foot above-ground level wireless communication facilities and one 95-foot above-ground level instrumentation platform to support US Air Force communications in an AC agricultural district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right, any questions from the dais? Is the applicant?
The applicants are virtually present, and we did not receive any objections, nor is anyone at the kiosk to speak on the item.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
Following one, PC 7 is PDD 21. I'm sorry, we did that one first, I apologize. Following one is PC 8, PDD 21 CU 06 in the name of RS Equity Holdings LLC Breakfast Station for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only on premises consumption in conjunction with the operation of a restaurant with outside seating and service of alcoholic beverages on a patio in a PU D planned unit development district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Okay, and the applicant's present?
Virtually present, yes.
No objections?
No one to object.
Okay, anything from the dais? If not, let's move on.
PC 9, PDD 20 CU 32. This is a conditional use and operating permit request for a yard trash facility. Melvin and Martha Stutzman. Conditional use to allow the operation of a yard trash disposal facility in an AC agricultural district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
Okay, is the applicant present?
Applicant is virtually present.
No objections?
No one to object, nor at the kiosk either.
No one to object from the dais? All right.
And that is the end of your consent agenda.
Okay, so can I ask for a motion to approve the modified consent agenda?
Jamie Girardi, I'll move approval of the modified consent agenda. And Peter Hansel, second.
Okay, and just to clarify, that is, those are items one through six. Plus eight, right, eight and nine, is that right? Oh, that's right, we pulled five. Okay, so one, one, two, three, four. Five is off, six is approved, and seven is a continued, and eight and nine are on consent. So is that clear as mud? Okay.
That's it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion. All in favor? By roll call?
Jamie Girardi. Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel. Roberto Sais.
Aye.
Christopher Poole. Richard Tonello. Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, if you'd just give me a second so I can share my screen so we can go over item PC 5. And there we go. Okay. Item PC 5 is PDD 21 CU 01 for the District School Board of Pasco County Vertex Development Verizon Wireless. It's for a 140-foot above-ground level close-mount wireless communication facility in a master plan unit development district at the Bexley Elementary School campus. The parcel is located in southwest Pasco County on the north side of Bud Bexley Parkway, also known as Tower Road, approximately 860 feet east of the intersection of Ballantrey Boulevard and Bud Bexley Parkway Tower Road. The site contains the Bexley Elementary School. What's being proposed is 140-foot above-ground level wireless communication facility that's close-mounted, which means that the antenna is mounted close to the pole within a 2,500 square-foot fence compound. According to the Land Development Code, wireless communication facilities are either permitted use or conditional use in all future land use classifications in all zoning districts. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on September 3 of 2020. On September 25, 2020, an alternative standard relieving the applicant from providing landscaping to the wireless communication facility was approved based on safe school design guidelines, and that's included in your packet. The surrounding zoning is MPUD. It includes to the north, it's the Bexley Elementary School, Ballantrey Boulevard, and Bexley South Parcel 4, Phase 1, and it's a drainage tract for that subdivision. To the east is Bexley South Parcel 4, Phase 3B, Track B 35, which is open space and drainage. To the south is Bud Bexley Parkway or Tower Road, Ballantrey Village 5 subdivision, which consists of single-family dwellings. And to the west is the actual Bexley Elementary School campus, and this is to the west of the actual where the compound will be. And also the Bexley South Parcel 4, Phase 1, Track B 12, which is a drainage area and park site. The surrounding future land use is PD plan development, and then to the south you have RES 3, which is three dwelling units per acre, and it's the Ballantrey subdivision. The access to the property is through Bud Bexley Parkway through a 20-foot wide access easement. This is the, kind of like showing the elevation of what the tower will look like, and you also have a photo simulation on the right-hand side. And the recommendation is approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
Okay, and the objectors present?
There, Mr. Lech should be on WebEx, and the applicants are also here. Mr. Ruiz with Vertex Development, and Ms. Solik are on as well.
Okay, well then, I think it makes sense to have the person that's going to object. Let's hear what he has to say, and then they can respond.
Okay.
Good afternoon. This is Kevin Lech. Address 4019 Duke First Street in Land O' Lakes for this item PC 5. My house, my property is located approximately...
Yes. Mr. Lech, have you been sworn?
I know, I don't think we did that.
Okay, let's get the clerk to swear you in. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Lech, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continue.
My property is located approximately 370 feet directly south of the proposed cell tower site, and I'm calling today to object for a few reasons. Visually and financial impact of a cell tower at this location to not only my property but other residential properties in the area. First point I'd like to make is I don't believe that a cell tower is required in this location. I've lived there for 14 years. I've never had cell service issues. The applicant will most likely tell you that location of this cell tower is based on technology, and this is where the technology is bound to have to be. But I'm here to tell you that, again, I do not have cellphone service issues at my house. Therefore, I think this is really for the extended development of the Bexley Ranch residential development, and therefore should be located further north to service those folks that it's really this is for. There are other areas available, especially east, thousands of acres of vacant land that could be perfect for a use of it, not directly behind residential properties. Second point I'd like to make is the homes along the stretch of Ballantrey subdivision and Duke First have been through a lot the last five years with the construction of Tower Road, the school, the extension of the school, the extension of Tower Road, and the current ongoing trucking activities along Tower Road for a permanent burrow pit that the Bexley developer is trucking dirt back and forth Tower Road on a daily basis that is extremely disruptive to our daily lives on Duke First Street as people try to work and learn from home these days. So largely, we've been able to mitigate a lot of these impacts, especially on my property with vegetation, but there's no way to mitigate 140-foot cell tower within 370 feet from my property. Last point I would like to make, most important, is the financial impact of my property. You can go online and find all kinds of information, but the most poignant one that I was able to find was a survey of 1,000 people done by the National Institute of Science, Law, and Public Policy that indicates 94% of these respondents would not buy property in the vicinity of a cell tower. So that is a direct impact to all...
Sir, that indicates that your time is up. Thank you so much for your comments.
Okay, so if we can hear from the applicant now?
If you would bring Alan Ruiz or Jennifer Frost or Mary Solik on?
They are on. Mary Solik and Alan Ruiz are on. I see Mary has unmuted, but I don't know why we can't hear her. I'll unmute Alan Ruiz if he wants to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Ruiz or Ms. Solik, would you? Are you there?
Hello, this is Alan Ruiz with Vertex Development.
Mr. Ruiz, would you please provide your address for the record and whether you've been sworn?
405 South Dale Mayberry Highway, number 244, Tampa, Florida, 33609, and I have been sworn.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So I guess we're having some technical difficulties right now. Our intention to have Ms. Solik present the case on our behalf.
Is she not available?
I'm not understanding what's going on with Mary.
She's on, but I don't know why her audio is not working.
May I have a quick moment to reach out to her to see if I can get the problem solved?
You're in different locations?
Yes, sir.
Sure, just try to make it quick. Technology's wonderful, isn't it?
All right, hello. Mary, can you hear us?
Yeah, that's probably not going to work for us. That's not coming in right. There's a lot of feedback.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if we cannot get an effective presentation from the applicant, my recommendation would be that you continue this item.
Okay, continue it, okay. I think that's, I think I was just thinking about that myself. Brilliant minds, you know, David. Okay, then do I hear a motion to continue?
Actually, so I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Alan Ruiz again. I'll just go ahead, and if it's all right with you guys, just move forward. This site was originally brought about because Verizon... This site was originally brought about because Verizon Wireless needed to enhance their coverage in the Bexley area, Bexley Elementary area. When we're talking about coverage enhancements, we're talking about the ability to have a signal reach into people's homes and have reliable in-home coverage, in-building coverage versus just your phone working when you're outside. Also, the need for this site is due to increased demand for capacity. As technology advances and 5G advances and applications advance, there's a greater need for more bandwidth and more densified network in the area. We also have had, recently had T-Mobile reach out to us with an interest in co-locating their equipment on the tower for the same purposes of enhancing their network for greater speeds and greater densification of their network as well, and also for in-building coverages. We are in agreement with staff's report, staff report, and all the conditions placed on us are in the report, and we respectfully request to recommend approval of the site to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else has any questions. I guess my only question at this stage is what kind of flexibility do you have to move on that particular site? I know there's a lot of room on that site, on the school site, and I see there's more room going in the direction of where the homes are not located. Can you move further in that direction?
So generally speaking, with, whenever we've done, this, I want to say this is now the fourth site we've done on a Pasco County school site, and the reason that we pushed this site to the south and where it's located is in an effort to steer away from the children at the school. We're trying not to encroach on any of the buildings or any of the parking areas or anything, anywhere else where the children might be. So if you look at the property that's overview shot right there, the north quarter of the property looks like it's encompassed by parking, and the entire, it looks like the center of the parcel is covered up with buildings, and so that's what pushed us to the south.
I know, that's all obvious. I see that, but you know, where you have it located now, if looking at this aerial, if you moved it all the way to the left, you'd be over by those ponds away from any houses. And that's the question I'm asking you. I wouldn't ask you to relocate it on the parking lot or on top of the buildings. I'm suggesting that maybe you have room to move it to the left all the way over toward the, that property line, that boundary near those ponds. Is there any reason why you can't do that?
To be perfectly honest with you, I don't know. I would have to go back out to the property, and I'd also have to get input from the principal of the school and the school board members that we've been working with on the site.
Well, we have a member of this, you know, from the school board here. Richard, do you have any input there?
Yeah, what I was looking at is if you look, there's a green area there, and those are play courts. So I think this, the area there of moving would be, it'd be a narrow spot to get through. They'd have to have a way for the trucks to get back there. So I believe that was the idea of there, to have it closest to the road there.
It looks like, Richard, it looks like, maybe I'm just seeing a blue line or something. It looks like there's a, like a little access road coming to that corner now off of the Boulevard. You see what I'm talking about?
The blue area?
That little blue line that runs, you know, from the Boulevard to the property line on the left-hand side between those retention areas.
Yeah, we don't own that property. The red area is where we own.
But is that an access road to your property?
I don't believe so, because I think that there's a, like a, not a water body, but it's a creek that runs through there, and you can see the, how the green area is there.
That looks like a multi-use path there, actually.
The one I'm looking at?
You're talking about this feature right here?
The one going up, no, the one going up to the property. This one here.
If you're speaking of this line here, that's basically like a track line, so it just basically shows that that's what encompasses this drainage tract here. So I know this here does look like a path, but this blue line is just showing the tract, the, this is this tract, and then everything, this is another tract. So you see how the different blue is showing the parcel lines? So it's just, these are parcel lines.
Okay. Well, does anybody else have any input with regard to that?
I have just two questions, maybe, or three. I read through the public comment that they held on what the, anyway, the, I think it was June 20th, no, that's not, anyway, at their, at their public meeting that they held, they indicated that, that there might be some health risks to the children or to the students at that particular elementary school. And although I'm not an expert in cell towers, there has been publications about certain types of hazards that can come from it. The other question I have is if this goes on the school property, does the school district receive any financial reward from it? Any fees or any requirements like that, any types of rental fees for the use of the property?
Yeah, Richard, that...
Yeah, I can answer. Regarding the, I guess, the issue of health, we've done a study. There was a school, John Long Middle School, before it was actually, the cell tower was put in, and we've done readings before and afterwards.
Could be answered from the company that wants to put the cell tower up. I don't think any of us are board or experts in that field unless I'm wrong, but the question of financial reward for the school district is an honest question to ask. Is there any?
Yes, we do get, we get money for that, and to be frank, that money is used for the students. It helps pay for extra computers, so it directly impacts the students and ultimately it's their learning.
And I noticed on the, one of the responses for Mr. Ruiz, Alex Ruiz, hope I didn't mispronounce your name, but one of the questions that came that was from Kevin, do you consider this a non-residential area? And I guess the question really was, where could you put this tower? And his response was, his response being Alex Ruiz, was that the challenge is finding a willing landlord with a property that meets the code and the residential setbacks. And from what I've heard, I can see they go to the north, I guess that would be the northwest quarter up there, it looks like that's vacant land up there that they could pursue. I think the gentleman, Kevin has a legitimate complaint, and some of the other people that have made comments at the meeting have legitimate complaints about the safety and the visual aspects of the tower going up, so I feel that another location would be more appropriate. That's my opinion.
Anybody else have comments or questions?
As far as the, if you know about Bexley, it's slated for, I think, about 14,000 homes, so moving it might be okay today, but five years from now, three years from now, one year from now, you're just moving the problem. So if it's an issue of being close to homes, there's really nowhere you can move it, that it's not going to be close to homes.
The advantage to that, though, is that people who buy those homes up there would know the tower was there. These folks bought homes with no anticipation of having a tower in their backyard. So it's kind of like, okay, you put it in my backyard, but I'm already here, as opposed to if the tower is there and I buy a home, then I don't feel that I have a legitimate complaint because I knew the tower was there, so.
Excuse me, can you all hear me now? This is Attorney Mary Solik.
I don't know who that is, but I can't understand them.
Ms. Solik, would you please state your name and your address for the record and whether you've been sworn, please?
Sure, this is Attorney Mary Solik, 121 South Orange Avenue, 1500 Orlando, Florida, 881, and I have been sworn. I've got, somebody moved me from the attendee to the panelist, so now the audio is apparently working. The challenge here is that towers are allowed in all zoning districts across the Pasco County Code. There is no prohibition or limitation of towers in residential areas, and frankly, that's where the demand is being generated these days, is from residential areas. They are required to be processed as a conditional use. Your code does not have any specific setback requirements for us from residential uses. We're just supposed to consider the impact of the tower, and your code builds in language that says that just because it's visible, that's not an automatic adverse impact. Your code also says that when we use a monopole tower, we're mitigating the impact of the tower, and this tower is proposed to be a monopole with flush-mount antennas, which further mitigate its impact. The location of cell towers is driven by a number of considerations. We, first of all, are driven by the technology. The carriers tell us where they need to be, and then they give us a search area, and Verizon gave a search area for this particular area, and then we have to find a willing landlord, and then we have to find a property that meets the requirements of the code. So we have a three-layered selection process. So in a virtually residential community like this, the school property offers us a unique opportunity to get in and service a residential area on a property, on a, on a property that is a public use that benefits from the income from the tower. Let me see what other comments I have. The comment about the impact to children, the Federal Telecommunications Act gives local governments the ability to regulate the location of cell towers based on land use considerations, but the FCC regulates emissions from towers and prescribes limits on what, how much, how much the emissions that can come from towers, and because they have the exclusive jurisdiction to regulate that issue, the Telecommunications Act prohibits local governments from regulating towers based on their emissions. So the school board did their own due diligence to make, to determine whether to have on an elementary school property, done studies at other elementary schools, and determined that facility would be an appropriate use of their property, and they did not, and they have developed other cell towers on other elementary schools in Pasco County. Mr. Letch raised the issue of property values. That is not something that is regulated by your code. Impact to property values is not one of the considerations in your criteria, but we've also not seen evidence that cell towers have either a negative or a positive impact on property values. We are starting to, we're unaware of any property praiser across the state of Florida that adjusts an assessment of residential property due to its proximity to a cell tower, and we're actually starting to see some anecdotal evidence that people actually want to live in a connected world. They want to have really good, robust wireless coverage in their homes, they run a number of devices, and they actually seek out properties in areas that have robust wireless service. I know now that we have so many school students learning from home, it's become an even more critical issue. They have strong wireless service in residential areas. So we are, we are limited by the technology and the design of the Verizon system. They are the anchor tower.
All right, well, that's your time.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, this is David Goldstein. I don't think she ever addressed your question, which is why you can't move the tower farther to the west. Could she please address that question?
And I would have to give you the same answer that Mr. Ruiz did. We would have to go back and talk to our landlord. There was a reason why our landlord wanted to put it where it was on that particular property. We'd have to go back to the school to find out whether they'd be willing to move it further to the west. I did see some challenges moving it too far to the west because we couldn't access from Bexley by Bexley because of that drainage ditch, but that's something we'd have to go discuss with the landlord. I can answer that question.
So what I'm hearing is there's no technology issues for Verizon to move it farther to the west? It's only whether the school board would have an issue moving it to the west?
I don't think Verizon would have an issue moving it on this particular property to the west, correct? Usually that much of a shift is not an issue.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure how important that issue is to you. If it is, you may need to continue this item until we can get an answer from the school board.
Which concerned, but you need to get us an answer back from your company, so we need to, I believe, continue this, and until you can bring us a firm answer, and we'll see if it's, if we agree that it's a reasonable answer. But I think we have an obligation to be mindful of those residents, and I think, as Pete said, you know, it wasn't there when they bought, you know? If it was, it wouldn't be a problem. So that would be my recommendation. It's up to the board to make a motion one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, this is Michael Cox.
Yeah, Mike.
I have a question to David. Does the board have the ability to control the placement of that tower on that property?
I would say, yeah, yes, but in certain reason. I mean, as long as there's not some, that's why I asked whether there was some technology reason why the tower had to be in that location, and the answer I got back was no. So I think the location and compatibility with adjacent, you know, uses is relevant for the planning commission and the board, as long as it's not going to stop them from providing the service. It doesn't sound like moving it would stop them providing, from providing the service.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Michael, if that answers your question, do we have a motion? I think Pete, you were going to make a motion.
I was going to make a motion to continue this, further study, and some feedback from the company that is doing a study on the cell tower placement to determine whether or not it can be moved to another location and still achieve the benefit that they want for the community as a whole.
Peter, you want to give your name for the record?
Peter Hansel.
Okay, so Peter is making a motion to continue. Do we have a second?
Can I get a clarification on the continuing state? The next planning commission is October 22nd. I don't know if the applicant could get us that information by then. Just want a clarification.
I think they can.
I think that was a yes, but I'm not positive.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, looking for a second?
A second. Chris Poole.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Signify by roll call.
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Sais.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Richard Tonello.
Aye.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Is that it?
That's all we have for today.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Jamie Girardi, so moved.
A second?
A second. Chris Poole.
Okay, I'm sure there's no further discussion on that.
Aye.
All right, all in favor, signify unanimously by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, David.